Good evening and welcome to the October 16th, 2018 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting in the council chambers of the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma at 7:00 PM. This evening, the invocation will be given by Pastor Logan Key of the Bethel Community Church. And following the invocation, we will have the flag salute. Pastor Key.
God, I thank you for just all the people that are here, just ready to serve our community. I pray that tonight, any decisions that are made are just made with wisdom and discernment, and God, that it would just be a blessing to our community. I thank you for all the students that are here, just getting to see a little piece of government. That's pretty awesome that we have a community that wants to grow and to just, God, just honor you in our decision. So, I ask for your blessings on this evening and this meeting, and it's in your son's name that I pray. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
McCarron.
Here.
Smystrela.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
Kachini.
Here.
Selby.
Here.
We have two proclamations this evening, one for Fire Prevention Week, and then we have a second one this evening that I'll present here in just a minute. And Chief Vaughn, would you and your gentlemen come forward, please? Make room for these guys, they're all bigger than I am. Whereas the city of Yukon is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting in our city, whereas we recognize that fire is a great concern, and we also recognize that homes are a location where people are at their greatest risk of fire. Half of the home fire deaths result from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM when most people are asleep. Residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of a home. And whereas the residents should have a plan for testing their smoke alarms and a fire escape plan. Now, therefore, I, Michael McCarron, Mayor of Yukon, do hereby proclaim October 2018 as Fire Prevention Month. Throughout this city, and I urge all of the people of Yukon to install smoke alarms in every bedroom during the Fire Prevention Month 2018, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Yukon Fire and Emergency Services. Given under my hand and seal of the city of Yukon on this 16th day of October 2018, and I signed the proclamation for the fire department, and Yukon is a great place to live because of these guys standing right here next to it. It is genuinely a really fine fire department force that we have that takes care of us every night, and I'm very proud to present this to Chief Vaughn.
What we have with us, Corporal Brent Weaver, Captain Cameron Billups, Captain Chris Wall, Corporal Brandon Stevens. Just real quick, what we do on fire prevention is, these guys go around to all the schools here in the city of Yukon, and they talk with the kids and talk to them about fire safety and fire prevention and stuff. And then they also go around to several of the churches and the daycares, and everybody wants to come by and play a class on them. And then we also do several tours of the station. We always do tours throughout the year. During this month, we do several more because they won't come out and have a class there at the station, so we do that. We just really appreciate the city's support and all the citizens' support.
I live in a neighborhood called Ranchwood, Ranchwood Elementary School, and certainly one of the very finest, is Miss Becky Oglesby. Becky, would you come up and join me, please? Frequently known as Batman for all of you, her students call her that affectionately often. And whereas Becky Oglesby serves as an art teacher at Ranchwood Elementary School in Yukon, and as the 2017-2018 Yukon Public Schools District Teacher of the Year, was recently named the 2019 Oklahoma Teacher of the Year. Whereas she credits her third grade teacher, as well as her experience at Plaza Towers Elementary in the 2013 for her passion to teach students, and whereas Becky is referred to as the Batman Teacher, because she arrives to be the ordinary person who fights to give her students the best education and empower them to find their purpose. And whereas the Yukon City Council does hereby take this opportunity to recognize Becky and to express on behalf of all of the citizens, the most sincere appreciation for her dedication and service to the community and our schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Yukon, the City of Council of the City of Yukon, give special thanks to Becky Oglesby for her dedicated service to the Yukon Public Schools, and extends its heartiest congratulations to being named the 2019 Oklahoma Teacher of the Year, and declares Tuesday, October the 16th, 2018, to be Becky Oglesby Day. In the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, given under my hand and seal, the city of Yukon this 16th day of October, and let's really hear it for Becky.
I am a teacher, I feel like it's not just my career, it's my calling, and I just do what I do, and I love kids, and so happy to be in Yukon. I was raised in a small town south of here, but I've come to Yukon for a purpose, and brought here by my husband, and so happy to be a part of Yukon, and thank you.
You're so grateful to have her, aren't we, folks? Brings me no more joy, most joy I could possibly give to folks. I live two blocks from Ranchwood, and all of my children went there as well, so I'm very grateful for Becky. Okay, moving on down on the agenda, visitors. This section of the proceedings is for visitors who would like to address the Yukon City Council on a non-agendated item. Do we have anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council on a non-agendated item? Seeing none, we will now recess as the Yukon City Council and convene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the Yukon Municipal Authority Agenda is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all of the authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) The minutes of the regular meeting of October the 2nd, 2018; and B) Payment of material claims in the amount of $263,736.61. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item 2A, consider approving and authorizing the following actions conveying permanent easements from the City of Yukon to the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation regarding the State Highway 4 roadway project 4: A) A strip, a piece or parcel of land lying in the southeast quarter of Section 8 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel 20. B) A strip, piece or parcel of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section 9 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel 21. C) A strip, piece or parcel of land lying in the southwest quarter, Section 9 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel 21 dot 1. D) A strip, piece or parcel of land lying in the northeast quarter of Section 8 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel 22. E) A strip, piece or parcel of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section 5 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel 23. And F) A strip, piece or parcel of land lying in the northeast quarter of Section 5 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel 25. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Item 3A, consider approving and authorizing the following actions regarding the billboard located on West Vandeman Avenue of Bounce Academy: For: A) Warranty deed from the City of Yukon to Opitz Inc. for a tract of land situated within a portion of the southwest quarter, Section 19 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian in Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, containing 1,475 square feet. B) Waterline easement from Opitz Inc. to the City of Yukon for a tract of land situated within a portion of the southwest quarter of Section 19 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian in Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, containing 1,000, well, 1,475 square feet. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Okay. We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all the council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) The minutes of the regular meeting of October the 2nd, 2018; B) Payment of material claims in the amount of $1,071,266.72. C) Designated items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. D) Setting the date for the next council meeting for November the 6th, 2018, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item 2, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby.
No report to save you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3, consider approving ordinance 1367, an ordinance which provides amendment of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by amending Section 114-34 by providing for future increases for water service and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Shelley.
I understand, and one of the things I ran on was the water issue, and I understand there are a lot of people's concern. I also understand that Oklahoma City water is getting more expensive every year, and we have to purchase water from Oklahoma City. One of the things I wanted to get was, people who pay a base rate of $14.50, pay also a $20 rate for water. They're paying more for Oklahoma City water than what they're using, and that concerns me. And so, I just feel like that should have been changed on that.
There you go. Mr. Crosby.
I understand your concern. I think one of the things we do with our water rates and people that takes care of a lot of these people that are on limited income, use less than 3,000 gallons, is that we give them a discount on their sewer rate, I mean garbage rate. And right now, you know, if you look at what we pay on the garbage rates right now, they pay $5.50, and where everybody else pays $18.79. It costs the same amount to pick their garbage up at every house, and yet, because of the disparity and the low amount of water they use, and people on limited income, we give them that break, and I think that makes up for the difference. And that's something I think the city has stood by for all the years I've been here, and I think it makes up a lot of difference.
Any other discussion? Okay. Vote, please.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Selby.
No.
Item 3A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance 1367. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Because I believe in majority votes, I vote yes.
Item 4, consider approving ordinance 1368, an ordinance which approves amendment of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by amending Section 98-11 by providing for future increases in fees for residential and commercial removal and disposition of solid waste and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Vote, please.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Item 4A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance 1368. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item 5, consider approving ordinance 1369, an ordinance which provides an amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by amending Section 98-23 by providing for future increases in fees for rural collection of solid waste and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Selby.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item 5A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance 1369. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item 6, consider approving ordinance 1370, an amending ordinance number 657, Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for being a part of Lot 1, Block 2, Yukon Parkway, West Phase 4, 6, one of those, West Phase 6, in addition to the City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, a tract of land situated in the southwest quarter of Section 30 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, be changed from C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District to C3 Restricted Commercial District, and the address on that is 720 Professional Circle, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Item 6A, consider approving emergency clause of ordinance 1370. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item 7, consider approving the final replat, a tract of land situated in Lot 1, Block 2, Yukon Parkway West, Phase 6, to the City of Yukon, being a part of southeast quarter of Section 30 Township 12, range 5 West, in the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, and that is 720 Professional Circle, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Item 8, consider approving ordinance 1371, an amending ordinance number 657, Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for being a part of Lot 13, 14, 15, 16, Block 112 in Lake, in addition to the City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, be changed from CB, which is Central Business District, to R2 Combined Residential District, and that's at Fourth and Maple here in town, and declaring an emergency, not any motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Do you wish to say anything? All right, vote please.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item 8A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance 1371. Have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
And any discussion? Vote, please.
Selby.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Item 9, consider approving the final plat for Frisco Ridge Phase 3, a tract of land situated within the northwest quarter and southwest quarter of Section 19 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian in Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, with a condition as with condition as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Who is the second?
Donna.
Donna. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Horton, are you here this evening? This is just the final plat now for the housing portion of Frisco Ridge.
This is for the final, yes, for Section 3, which will finish it out.
All right, and all of the conditions have been met by them?
They have corrected all the items that need to be corrected.
Okay, there were several, were there not?
Yes, there were.
That they wanted, and so those are now all resolved.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Horton. Vote, please.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item 10, consider approving a deviation from the planned unit development PUD for the R1 Single Family Residential District and R2 Combined Residential District with conditions for the property located at 901 East Main, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just say the Planning Commission has been very busy.
Yes, they have.
They're doing a lot of work.
And it's unlikely to slow down at this point. Yeah. Any other discussion? Thank you. Vote, please.
Yanda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Smystrela.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item 11, consider approving a final plat for the Yukon Crossing Phase 2 Residential, a tract of land lying in the southeast quarter of Section 16 Township 12 North, range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, and the address is 901 East Main, with conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Vote, please.
Kachini.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Item 12, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of $25,266.50 for the drainage improvements on Oak Creek Drive to be paid to Brewer Construction, Oklahoma, under the terms of the 2017 Concrete and Asphalt Paving Drainage, Water, and Sewer Project. Project Contract, to be paid from the 2017 Revenue Note, as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Item 13, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of $6,981.30 for drainage improvements to the football field at Taylor Park, to be paid to Brewer Construction, Oklahoma, under the terms of the 2017 Concrete and Asphalt Paving Drainage, Water and Sewer Project Contract, to be paid from the 2017 Revenue Note, as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item 14, consider authorizing the city engineer to advertise for proposals for the Yukon Animal Control Facility, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this item has been discussed previously, is it be a new animal shelter dislocated to the east of its present location? Be a great upgrade to what the building is there now, which is in deplorable condition. Construction time should take approximately a year and we look forward to it be opening in 2020.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 15, new business? Mr. Sherrod?
No new business tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 16, council discussion. Councilwoman Yanda.
Well, I just want to express my appreciation to the Yukon Fire Department. They always do an excellent job and we so appreciate you. And then once again, congratulations to Becky. The entire city of Yukon is very, very proud of you and we know you'll represent our city well as you go around the state and nation. And then I would also like to thank everyone that had a part in the huge success of the Chuck Festival last Saturday. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smystrela?
Yeah, just want to thank everyone for coming this evening, whether you had to or not. It's a great, great group and I'm so happy to see you and come back again. Thank you.
Councilman Kachini?
Well, I want to thank Becky for being one of the outstanding teachers. Being a substitute in the system myself, it's, it's a privilege to working with a great bunch of teachers as well as a great bunch of students.
Councilwoman Selby?
Well, I think they've said it all.
Yeah, pretty much.
You should start down here next time. Thank you all for coming tonight. Make the most of your tomorrow and be kind to one another.
I too would like to thank Becky, just special because it's, the school is over in my neighborhood and that makes her pretty special folks. And for all you sitting out here in Mr. Andrews' class, one of these days that could be you up there receiving a proclamation or you could be sitting up here with us. And I look forward to that day because I'll be so old by then I can't, you know. We have quite a few things going on in Yukon. Friday, October the 19th, we have movie at the Coop. Saturday, we have Spooksville at the Yukon Community Center. Monday, we have the Mummy and Son Masquerade at the Jackie Cooper Gym. Tuesday is the Spooky Senior Special at the Dale Robertson Center. Friday, November the 2nd is the 13th Annual Patriot Project, for which we are very proud every year that those folks come out and spend time with us and help our keep, our city be the special place that it is. And Saturday, November the 3rd is the Pumpkin Harvest Craft Festival at the Dale Robertson Center. And I just, we live in a great town, guys, and I certainly am very proud to be here, proud of our fire guys who are here this evening and certainly Becky as well. So with that, I'll close with no further, any comments from anyone. This meeting is adjourned.